Okay, so it seems 6:31. Do we have, we have Susan, Yorgos, Sandy, Chris, we, uh, we're good. We have a forum. So is there a motion to, uh, open the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
For a second.
Second.
And so is everyone here then?
Jordana and Alex are not here yet. Everyone else is present.
Okay. It says, it was Sandy and Yorgos.
Hasn't popped up for me yet.
Oh, hold on.
I just turned it on.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Thanks, Mary.
All right, mine's not coming up either. Or Doc's. Oh, hold on, there it is.
I just got it.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Great. Would everybody now join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
And to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end.
And justice for all. For everybody watching, I do stand up, but I feel the need to mute my camera so you don't see half of everyone's body. So that's the reason I mute that when we do that, just so you know if anyone had a question on that. Uh, okay. Moving on to public input. Number one, is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak, raise your concern or ask a question during public input? Number one, that would be the time to do that. You would have three minutes to, uh, address the board.
You can come over here.
Raise your hand or put your question into the chat room.
We have, uh, one attendee, Kevin.
Great, okay.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Everyone hear me?
Yep, please just give us your name, not your address, and you have three minutes.
Very good, thank you. Hi, it's, uh, it's Kevin Deller. Uh, I spoke last, last, uh, meeting, March 1, parting a suggestion of looking at a turf field versus grass, or grass versus turf, by the way. Uh, I'd like to just clarify my remarks a little bit, uh, as there was an article in the Sec Harbor Express and Facebook, regarding my suggestion. Uh, I suggested that we revisit the turf versus grass with current science, as opposed to what we debated a few years ago. Uh, there's new material, it does not have the rubber crumbs that were in question. Uh, and I, I think it would be worth our while to research this newer option. You know, and perhaps creating a task force to do this research with, with the turf companies and grass companies, uh, perhaps tapping into major universities that have recently installed the newer turf. Uh, I'm not supporting one option or the other, but asking that the community and the board, uh, make an informed decision with current science, not, uh, turf that we had years back. Uh, another thing I'd like to ask is regarding the recommendations in the park contract, uh, this, the Board of Ed contract with the park board. Just going through a list of recommendations. Item number 10, you know, this was in May of 18, was to install new fencing and a slightly larger backstop on the Little League field, that's the lead, uh, the field that has all the banners on it. Cap it with safety plastic, um, and it's, it states this would make the varsity field, you know, uh, the girls for girls softball. Uh, under the brief explanations column, it read, this would become the varsity football complex by utilizing the current dimensions and current fed fencing is estimated to be over 40 years old. Uh, underneath that, it said in red, the, there are immediate safety concerns related to the current fencing, projected date of completion, stated immediate safety issue, and if the park and school agree, the park to install and submit invoice to the school from the ongoing reserve fund. My question is, like, what is the, could you describe the, the protocol on following up on safety issues such as this? Whose ultimate responsibility is it? How is it determined what the cost should be to the school and who determines it? Um, and I feel like this is something that needs to be clarified in the upcoming contract. I think the fence, the outfield fence was installed about 15 months later or so after the safety issue was raised. Um, the backstop and the safety cap, you know, have still not been installed. And I was curious if any conversations occurred about this in the last year, especially, uh, when sports were completely shut down, the school was still on a contract, I believe, and paying the park. Um, perhaps we could have used some of that money to finish this safety issue. Um, I think it would be a great idea, as was suggested in the last meeting, that it would be in the best interest of the school and student athletes to actually have the Board of Ed and perhaps parents, uh, meet at the park to discuss, you know, the most important issues for this next contract. All of these thoughts, comments have one central theme in mind, and that's providing improved, safer and multipurpose field for our kids. Thank you.
Thanks for the comments. We, again, as, as we stated at the last meeting, are, are going over that. Um, the contract is through this school year. In the normal course of business for the school and the park, that, that will be reviewed. I do believe that all members of the board, um, have been down to that park, not necessarily between the last meeting and today, but I think everyone is aware of existing conditions down there. Um, in terms of safety concerns, I'm not sure who specifically reviews those. Jeff, maybe, you would know that if not, we can look into that and circle back to, on that specific point, Kevin.
Thank you.
Brian?
Yeah.
Um, can I just, if you don't mind, can I just add that the primary focus of the district is the fields, the state of the fields and the facility for the district's use, and not for the use of outside organizations? Cause that's, we don't have influence and control over that. That's not our purview.
I don't, I don't understand what you're saying, Chris.
All I'm saying is that if there are outside organizations that have their own specific requests for the facility, it wouldn't be the school district's role to negotiate that for those organizations. If it's, if it overlaps with what the school needs, then that's a benefit, but I'm just saying, we don't represent what the Little League needs. We don't represent what an outside soccer organization needs, or the Adult Softball League at night needs. You know, our role is really about, um, you know, and our agreement is really about the field and facility for the students during, in school-related activities.
Okay.
Brian, I'm not sure if you can see on your screen, but Kevin has raised his hand to speak again.
Okay, if it's, if it's one question, we can, we can do that.
Yes, Chris, the point I was making, that this was a recommendation by the school for girls softball. It has nothing to do with women.
Right.
This says nothing.
I, I understand. I wasn't negating, I wasn't, my statement wasn't specific to that, to, to what you said. It was just more in general, because I've had, I've heard from people complaining about conditions related to leagues that have nothing to do directly with the school district. So I was just letting them know, like, that's not our, we don't have that authority, and that's not our role to do that. It doesn't mean that the, there won't be overlapping concern potentially. I'm just saying, that's not, you know, we don't serve that role for the community.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, that's it.
Got it.
And by the way, I, my, my, all my daughters played softball, the latest softball team to play on that field, I was sitting in the stands. So personally, as a board member, I am intimately aware of the conditions on that field.
Okay, Brian, I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, um, next, I am.
I'm sorry, one just popped up.
Okay, sure.
We have Colin Mather.
Okay.
Go ahead, Colin.
Please state, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Colin, you need to unmute.
I'm sorry, uh, this is my first time. Uh, my name is Colin Mather. Prior graduate of Pearson High School. Um, I recently wrote a letter, and I was wondering if it was possibly read by anyone at the board. I read, I sent an email. Yep, and I don't know if that was read by any chance?
Yes, it was.
It was, okay. I, I, I was wondering if, uh, when the next contract is drawn up, if, you know, with the park, can the contract be drawn up with stipulations saying whether or not, you know, saying, you know, what the school would like to have done to those fields? And to have the payment of that contract, uh, be, you know, contingent upon the completion of those items. Um, is that a possibility?
We would take, if that's your suggestion, we could take that back to council. We're not going to negotiate, we can't negotiate a contract or terms. Um, that, that's not how the process works, but if that's a suggestion from the public as a board, we can consider that and take it through the appropriate methods, uh, during, when, when it's applicable. Right now, we're in a contract, so upon the expiration of that.
Okay, um, and I have another question regarding the field behind the high school. Um, I, as I understand it, it's not playable at the, at this time for whether it be field hockey or soccer. And that was recently done, you know, by, I, and I don't know who did the work, but who is responsible for the condition of that and, uh, lack of playability? Is that, is that, uh, I mean, whoever did the work, uh, who, are they, are they being held accountable for this?
Are you? Yeah, I, I don't, is that, is there a que, I'm not sure what the question is.
Well, the question.
Is the field playable or not?
Well, I was, I was, I've been made to understand, and I, I, I'm, you know, from various people, that that, that field is not playable. Am I correct in saying that?
Mr. Nichols?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Bramoff, uh, because he's been out there. So Eric, if you unmute your mic, just give us a current update on the condition of the backfield.
Yeah, the current condition of the backfield, the reason it's not playable is because we normally do not play field hockey in March. Uh, so right now, the grass hasn't started to grow. So we, we've scheduled all our, the majority of our field hockey contests. We've moved them to turf fields. Uh, nobody's grass is growing right now.
Right.
Others simply is not allowing it. So what we've done is, we've moved everything off of there. Even when the grass grows, though, uh, it's not optimum to play field hockey on grass. Uh, you know, the athletes, the coaches, uh, our opponents, they all prefer to play on, on, on turf, but, uh, and speaking about simply the conditions of the field right now, it's not playable. But we're hoping that if we can get a warm spell, it will be in the next few weeks.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any board follow-up?
I just want to say, I, I did not, I did not receive an email. I just went through my emails again, because I usually respond, um, saying, thank you for your email. So, Con, um, I apologize, I did not, I did not receive it.
Okay. Is there, is there, am I, uh, cause I did send it, uh, as, as directed, but I'm just wondering, is there, I don't know, maybe is there something, uh, I wonder, you know, cause I, it might have been from my, my specific email, that, uh, that's the reason why you didn't receive it. Uh, cause I have had trouble in the past, uh, from my email. It's a private server, so I'll send it again through a Gmail account.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, great. Uh, any other hands or comments, Mr. Fisher?
Uh, one moment, please. Switched gears here, I need to get back to that screen, sorry. Uh, yes, we have one more. Hold on one second, please. Brent, I'm sorry, I, could you raise your hand again, so I can allow you to speak? Hold on, I, I found you. There we go. You have Brent Green, go ahead.
Hey, guys, thanks for taking my question, and I think this may be directed more towards, Eric Bramoff, but during the time that we were developing the multipurpose field or the field behind the school, was there ever any companies that came in and, and presented or had an overall or far-reaching design for a multipurpose field that may encompass a track or a football field mixed with a field hockey field and possibly baseball diamonds? Did we ever have an outside company come in and present some type of, uh, complex that would serve multiple sports when we are looking at revamping that field? Thank you.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, I can answer that. Um, the, the type of analysis, um, that the question focuses on, was part of the turf, um, field solution, if you will. So it was embedded in that plan. But when we went with a grass plan, uh, the natural turf, uh, the elements that we just, that we just talked about were taken out. But the original turf field did have, um, plans for multipurpose field and a, a small track.
Weren't the dimensions going to be the same, though, related to either a, a natural field or artificial turf? Weren't we going to be dealing with the same footprint?
Uh, I don't recall when we switched to natural grass, that, um, that there was that level of analysis. The focus really was on just, uh, doing the work in the backfield, um, with some donated services to make it healthy and usable. Uh, the concern at that time, and I think it's still a concern now, is whether or not, uh, over time, we can maintain the health of that turf, uh, with year-round use.
Okay, understood. I mean, there is also alternatives of not seeding. You know, with, there's, there's rolled turf and other things that can be, that can be a bit more robust. Because, you know, you're dealing with, with certain types of turf that are designed for more high-traffic versus seeding and so on and so forth. But that might be something that you guys might want to consider for our future, is if we wanted to possibly encourage companies that would probably be very excited to come out and walk the fields and, and possibly look at a design that we could incorporate in the next couple of years.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Have a good one, have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Fisher?
Uh, no.
Okay. With that, we will, anything else from board members? No, okay, great. We will move on to item four of the agenda, the 4.1. Uh, we have a presentation this evening on community policing from, Sec Harbor Village Chief of Police, A.J. McGuire. Is the chief with us, Scott?
Uh, no, and I was not aware that he would be making a presentation tonight, sorry.
I think he is.
He's on Zoom, he's coming in on Zoom, Scott, that's.
He's on Zoom.
He's under participants.
Yep. Austin McGuire. Yeah.
Sorry. Go ahead, chief, you can speak.
Hi, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes. We can, we can see, we can hear you.
I actually, um, I want to, uh, actually bring, um, Sergeant Kenny Alvers in from East Hampton Town to discuss the, uh, School Resource Officer Program. Um, but I don't, I don't have my video on, I don't have little, uh, technical difficulties, but, um, Kenny, if you're on. Scott, do you see Kenny Alvers on there?
Yes, I do, hold on. Go ahead, you can speak as well.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Can.
Great, I, I don't know. If you can share a screen with Kenny too, please, he's got a presentation.
Um, I don't think I can do that in the middle of the meeting without having made him a presenter sooner. Um, give me, I'll try.
Okay.
Okay, I just promoted you. Uh, can you, should be able to share your screen now?
Yes, I should be able to, just give me one second.
Okay, we can see your screen now.
Perfect. Uh, it's only seven slides, so it'll, it'll go, uh, pretty quickly. I know you have a lot of other material to cover, so I'm, I'm going to get right into it. And then if you have any questions at the end, by all means, I'll, uh, answer whatever you have. Uh, so just really briefly about me, so you know who I am and, uh, why I care so deeply about, uh, the School Resource Officer Program. I've been with the East Hampton Town Police Department since 2008. I spent from 2008 to 2014, uh, assigned to patrol, working from Montauk to Wayne Scott. And since 2014, I was, uh, specifically reassigned as a School Resource Officer to the high school. Uh, and I basically spent my Monday to Fridays from 7:00 to 3:00 every single day, uh, assigned in the building, dealing with the kids, the administrators, the parents, um, and the surrounding, uh, school districts. I was promoted in 2018, and now I oversee and supervise all school-related and juvenile-related issues within the township of East Hampton, from Montauk to Wayne Scott. Uh, and I'm a Certified School Resource Officer and Advanced Juvenile Police Officer, uh, which allows me to be in the buildings with, uh, kids from kindergarten, preschool, all the way up to high school-aged kids. So by definition, from the Department of Justice, uh, the SRO is a sworn law enforcement officer who's responsible for safety and crime prevention in schools, and typically is employed by a local police or sheriff's agency, and works with the administrators, uh, for the benefit of both the students and the staff. Uh, and when I took over, that's, uh, what we did, but now we've grown it into so much more, uh, over the last few years, especially with the, uh, social media, uh, aspects of it, cyberbullying, and also now with the electronic smoking devices in trying to get parents and staff and education to the kids. The town has utilized SROs since the program's inception, uh, when the federal government put out the grants, since 2001. So again, uh, what we do primarily, uh, having a police car outside of the building is visual deterrent to anybody who might, uh, be thinking about doing something on school property that day. But also having a physical presence within the school building is most certainly, uh, a deterrent to kids, and it also allows us to make relationships with the kids. We assist, uh, the school administrators with building safety assessments, and also assist them with the required number of fire lock-it-down, blockout drills, uh, shelter-in-place drills, or whatever the school wants to in, involve us in, since if there is an emergency, we're going to be the ones that are there working, uh, with the building administrators. And obviously now investigating, uh, crimes within the school, or just assisting administrators with whatever questions, comments, or concerns they might have with different things that pop up throughout the day. And again, the majority of our time, what we do now is social media-related and, uh, tracking down different, uh, things to do with electronic smoking devices. We probably are dealing with at least, uh, one or two social media cyberbullying threats a day between the, the newer school districts that we cover. That does eat up a lot of our time. But obviously, I don't have to tell you that you are, uh, very well aware of how that impacts the student body of schools when certain things like that take on a life of their own. And obviously, uh, you guys know the difference between school law and police law. When I do presentations for the general public, they don't really understand how it works. But you guys do, you, uh, govern with, uh, school law. We follow the criminal procedural law and the penal law. And, uh, that is one thing that is, that we worked on in East Hampton. Uh, we, I always did not agree with, you know, uh, for example, when Adam or Maria Mondini was talking about when they were in those positions. But whatever the outcome was that we had for the, uh, situation was always in the benefit of the student. And that's the way that it should always be, um, in, in all of those, uh, different types of situations. So what we do now, a lot of, is assist with home visits for students or families in crisis. And that, we have made tremendous leaps and bounds with since the South Fork Behavioral Health Initiative, uh, when funding was put together there and, back in 2015 and 2016. Before that, we were taking, uh, at least in the township of East Hampton, uh, approximately one or two students a month, uh, up to Stony Brook Hospital for a variety of reasons, and then they were being evaluated there. And since that South Fork Behavioral Health Initiative, working within the school, we assist them many times in getting the students over to the Family Service League and eliminate, um, that ride to Stony Brook's, uh, psychiatric unit. So we're not traumatizing or scarring kids, putting them in a police car, um, sometimes in handcuffs, depending on the situation. Uh, and, you know, working together with the school on that has absolutely certainly been a benefit to, to the students. And anytime, uh, we have, uh, presentations in the classes, the, the school invites us into all criminal law, business law, uh, all the health classes, E and L classes, driver's education classes. You know, we always focus on the alcohol and drug awareness, but it's a great platform, uh, to talk about Good Samaritan laws, social host laws. And we also do Narcan training within the school, uh, for all of the staff members and whatever students, uh, that are of age, that are interested and have a parental sign-off. Uh, most kids do not know about the Good Samaritan law, and quite frankly, a lot of adults are not familiar with the specifics, uh, of the law. And anytime that we are in, in front of a student body, that is something, and regardless of what the class, uh, might be, the Good Samaritan law is something we talk about, because it provides protection for anybody who seeks medical assistance for a drug or alcohol overdose, um, for the caller as well as the victim. And I can tell you from presenting that in front of students, when, when they see the slide, they think that it's made up and that it's really not a law. And, uh, the more we can do to push that information out to students and parents, uh, the, the better off we'll be, because I've, I've seen it, uh, come full circle with, you know, working out in Montauk and East Hampton in the summer, seeing the kids that, uh, who probably would not have called 911 previously before they knew about the law. And they're the ones that are seeking, you know, first aid, uh, for fellow friends and classmates. Uh, and also the Narcan training, we've trained about 300 students and staff over the last, uh, two years. And certainly, we're looking to bring that back now that we have the, the kids back in the building again. That's really student-driven, they're, uh, the ones now who really want the training, and they're able to take the kids back home with them, or off to, uh, with them for the summer, off to school, wherever they might be going to college. They're given a prescription card, and then they can carry that wherever they go, that proves that they sat through a certified training. The kits are free, provided by the county, and pre-COVID, we could do as many people as we wanted to in the training. Now, if we wanted to do it, we would have to keep the classes smaller, uh, but it is certainly, uh, an option for us. Another thing that we were able to do, working closely with the school in, in East Hampton, is do substance abuse forums. Uh, we've done several of them, and between the two, we were able to get resources from the county and, uh, speakers from all over the country to come out and put these forums on, uh, for whomever, for the general public in the community, not just students, uh, in, you know, from the high school or any specific school district, but open it up to the whole township. And we got a lot of tremendous feedback from bringing in speakers like, uh, from the Medical Examiner's Office, uh, speakers from LI-CAD, the Long Island Council for Alcoholism and Drug Dependence, uh, and all other organizations, uh, that we were able to bring in. The feedback was great. We also do a number of Drug Takeback Days that are national days, supported by the Drug Enforcement Administration. And the school, uh, we use the school's, uh, email and outreach, and we have seen tremendously, uh, more positive, uh, quantities of pills being turned into us since we partnered with the school in getting that information out there to parents in the community. Uh, on average, the days that we do, we follow the DEA's days, April and October, one day on a Saturday, four hours. Uh, our last DEA day, we took back 150 pounds of unwanted prescription medications in four hours. So 150 pounds, that was the most we've ever taken back. Each time we do it, uh, we take more and more back. So again, partnering with the schools on different, uh, topics like these substance abuse forums and drug takeback days have, uh, we've got a lot of positive feedback, and it's just positives for the students and the community as a whole. And again, we, uh, you know, most people think of school resource officers, when you think, think of cops in schools, it's just primarily safety and security. But we're really there to work with anybody, uh, who might have any questions about any law, job shadowing, any types of presentations that we can do for students, staff, administrator, administrators, teachers, parents, uh, anybody at all. And we work closely, uh, with anybody who, you know, who would like our assistance, and uh, we are trying to grow the program now to, uh, get more officers in the school, hopefully, uh, over the next coming years, once we can get through COVID. Um, you know, looking to expand to have, uh, multiple SROs. Right now, we have myself and one other officer that cover all the schools within the township from Montauk to Wayne Scott. So hopefully, we'll be able to, we'll be able to grow that. So that, it was a very rapid versions, and I don't want to keep you here all night, but if you have any questions about anything that, that we do, uh, in East Hampton or anything, and I can, uh, clarify for you that I might have breezed over, I'll be, I'll be happy to, to answer that for you.
Great, thank you very much. And, and to, just as a, just as a form, that what's, just, you're there Monday through Friday, or how does the program run?
Uh, can you see me? Yeah.
Yes.
So that, that's correct. My, uh, my only assignment is, uh, normally the high school. So I'm there from 7:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon. normally the high school. So I'm there from seven in the morning to three in the afternoon. And whatever happens in the day that's generated from the school or has anything to do with the school, it's my responsibility. Right now, the other officer, Devin Toy, she handles the elementary schools, Montauk, Emmental Springs, and Wayne Scott.
Great, thank you. Any board questions for the sergeant? Thank you very much. And we're going to go back to Chief McGuire on the community policing update, which included SROs, crossing guards, which and I'm sorry, TCOs that we use as crossing guards and just an update for the community on on reform.
So thank you, Kenny, again. Kenny's also downplayed his role tremendously because I had the privilege of being his boss for a period of time. I oversaw the school security and the SROs and the work he did and the other SROs did was tremendous. And really, you you don't, I can't actually explain how how good of work they do. It's not punitive when they're working the schools, they work with the administration, they work with the school districts, they work with the children. When he asked if it was a Monday to Friday job for Kenny, he said, yes, it's not. He does so much after school on weekends, his relationships with people in the community are tremendous and he's well known for it in East Hampton. So Kenny, you should be proud of what you do.
Thank you, chief.
Welcome. So Kenny, if we're done with Kenny, I'll let him go because I don't want to keep him.
Great, thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
I'll see you. So, um, yeah, obviously, we've got a lot going on this year because of COVID, because of now the Sag Harbor Learning Center, we have now three positions we have to do, school resource, TCO in, we have to do crossing guards in. I have not been able to get a crossing guard since Kathy Carlosi, who retired and Brian and I were talking, the best option for a crossing guard would be to have somebody who is a hybrid employee between the school district and the village, like Kathy was, to fill that role. And really, I only have enough TCOs right now because I had kids who got out of college who aren't getting jobs because of COVID and the rollover, I, you know, I probably have 20, 30% rollover every year. So I don't know how long we will be able to keep up with it and it is expensive for the village. And but Brian and I have been talking and we want to do something that we think will work for the community the best we can. So we'll continue those, but we should, you know, if I'm right, Brian, please stop me if I'm wrong.
No, I I think that, yeah, that the TCO and the crossing guard is something that the chief brought to me that I would wanted to bring to the board to consider during the budget season with, you know, Mr. Nichols, so we can figure out if there's a way that the school can work with the village because I know it is important to have, you know, our crossing guards, TCOs, however you want to refer to them as, at all three buildings now that we have three buildings on site. So now is the appropriate time for that. So I didn't know, some of the board members might have been around when we had the well, one and only that I could find in the records of of previous crossing guard. And, you know, maybe look to refill those positions or that position somehow. So I think it's something the board should consider, administration consider, just for thoughts.
Brian?
Yes.
What what I would suggest is that, you know, as a board member, I'd like to, you know, at a future date, get a recommendation.
This was not on for action tonight, it was just on to to bring.
No, I know. I'm just saying that, you know, as we go through the process, my request would be for the superintendent to make a, you know, a recommendation to the board. You know, I I'm not thinking that the board will come up with what the plan is or respond to an outside party about the plan. My request would be to get a recommendation from Mr. Nichols.
It's a great suggestion. Any other questions for the chief while we have him here this evening? Okay.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
We appreciate it.
I have two children in the district, so I am definitely in it, I'm here. So and obviously I have very good relationships with all the administrators in the school. So we speak often. They have me here, so. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Mr. Nichols, 5.1 COVID update superintendent's report.
Yep, I'll try to move through this pretty quickly. I'll start with an academic update. March 1st, the high school went back to five days a week. And the reason we were able to do that is the high school administrators, Ms. Westhoff, Mr. Guinan and Ms. Carrero had sent a survey out to parents ascertaining the amount of students who would elect to go five days per week. And they were able to offer that again. We're about two weeks into it and it's a month by month decision. So currently 57% of the high school students are in attendance, five days a week, 43% are remote. A survey to plan for April and what we're going to do was sent out March 9th and March 15th. Those surveys are due March 18th and the data gleaned from the surveys will inform the decision, which will be announced sometime in late March regarding April instruction. From the beginning, we said that we would do our best to have students in as as often as we can in a safe way. So if the the numbers permit it, will remain five days per week at the high school level. And if the percentage of students electing to study five days per week goes up and that prohibits us from having students in five days per week, we'll go to a hybrid model. And again, that information will be shared with the community within the next week or two. High school sports, those started March 1st and we have 130 students, grades nine through 12, participating in boys cross country, girls cross country, field hockey, football, golf, boy soccer, girl soccer, volleyball, girl swimming and girls tennis. Of those sports, there are two that are labeled high risk. One of them is football. The host school is East Hampton, so East Hampton conducts the testing once per week, that is COVID testing. And our 14 students who participate in that program are tested by the East Hampton staff. Volleyball, we are the host school and so we conduct the testing, the tests are provided by the Suffolk County Department of Health. And we've had two testing days thus far, March 8th and March 15th. Thankfully, no positive tests from those two test dates thus far. The plan with regard to spectators originally was to have no spectators allowed for indoor contests and that guidance or that recommendation to the board has not changed. I wanted to see how outdoor attendance was going, specifically attendance from the opposing team's fans. Because what I didn't want to happen was for fans to descend upon a contest and to have an unsafe situation with people not adhering to social distancing guidelines or things like that. Mr. Bramoff has been monitoring our outdoor contests and reports that with the security in place, he's comfortable having our visiting team spectators attend on a trial basis. So my recommendation to the board is to allow that to happen effective tomorrow. Again, we're staffed effectively to provide for the safety of all attendees. Middle school sports scheduled to begin March 22nd. I told the board that I would make a recommendation about a week prior, looking at the data, the test positive data and the conditions on the ground. As of today in Suffolk County, was it, there was an update today, there was, where today's data is actually yesterday's data, with a 5.1% test positive rate in Suffolk County yesterday. The seven day average is 4.2. That's significantly lower than when we talked about this several months ago. So my recommendation is to proceed with middle school sports, which include boys and girls cross country, field hockey, football, which is hosted by East Hampton and will require testing of athletes on a weekly basis, boy soccer and girls tennis. That covers the the academic and sports update. One last piece of information. The governor announced that there are three mass vaccination sites that are scheduled to open the latter half of this week, Friday at SUNY, SUNY Stony Brook in Southampton, SUNY Old Westbury and Suffolk County Community College Campus in Brentwood. I think the Brentwood campus will not start administering the vaccines until April 7th. But I believe the other two, based on what I read, will start accepting appointments on Wednesday of this week with a plan to start vaccinating on Friday. So that is good news because nationally we know that vaccinations are 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 being dispersed quicker and quicker. And the sooner we get people vaccinated, the sooner we can move towards herd immunity, which is ultimately what we want. So that's the superintendent's update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any board questions?
No, but all sounds like it's positive. Thank you.
Great. Administrator's report, 6.1, oh, I'm sorry. Did we cover, we need to do 5.4 Jeff proposition four?
Yes, that is Ms. Adamcheck who will be covering that. So Mary, if your mic is unmuted, please provide the overview that you and I discuss.
Currently, the Board of Registration, which consists of four people who are appointed to run the vote, are come in on a specific day prior to the budget vote for those people who are not registered voters. So these people would come to the district office. It's actually scheduled this year for May 13th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. in the district office conference room, where these four people will register any new person who would like to vote. This resolution is for the district clerk to conduct the registration for new voters so that there is no cost to the district. So in other words, you wouldn't need four people to run this registration. I would do it.
Thank you, Mary. Any board questions about that? For Ms. Adamcheck? Okay, no board questions. Thank you, Mary. That was great. 6.1 principals report.
And we start with Mr. Malone.
Good evening, everyone. At the at the elementary school, I would like to update the board and the community on a couple of things that are happening. The first is we just just completed a service learning project on Friday. Kind of similar to what we do at the time of the Super Bowl game where students bring in soup, cans of soup, and we have a little fun by making a prediction about the game. We asked our students and families to donate boxes of cereal with the goal being of making a nice donation to local food pantries, the Sag Harbor Food Pantry and one that's at the Bridgehampton Childcare Center. By Friday, we had 520 boxes of cereal, which the students then used to set up like Domino's and then knock the knock the boxes down and create what we call the chain reaction of kindness throughout the building. So it was definitely a lot of fun, but more importantly, we're making a nice donation to some of our fellow community members in need. On Thursday and Friday, right before the break, I mentioned this at the last meeting, we will conduct our parent teacher conferences. Those days will be shortened days for the students. We'll dismiss by 11:15. This year, as we did in the fall, all of our conferences will be done through Google Meet. And our teachers are currently in the midst of setting up those appointments with parents. They'll run from roughly noon till 3:30 on both Thursday and Friday, and then we'll head into the spring recess.
Great, Ms. Carrero.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So at the middle high school, we've been busy because we're starting to actually plan the end of the year activities. Our high school musical auditions that we prepped and planned with parent involvement, as well as the good minds of our producers and directors. The auditions start on Monday, 3, March 22nd. We're very excited about that. They're going to be doing 10 minute musicals. And the musical will happen the first weekend in June, which we strategically planned between different assessments, the end of the AP test and the end of the IB test as well, and right before the Regents exams if they are occurring. We are holding an academic award meeting with our guidance counselors, as well as administrators and clerical staff that are involved in it because we want to make it a better experience than last year. Due to the pandemic, it had to be a video, so we were trying to think outside the box for different ideas on how to do that. So we're already starting that planning. We have a senior parent meeting. This is a big year for seniors and it's also been a very hard year for our senior class. They've gotten a lot of things taken away from them. So that meeting is going to be held next Wednesday, not when, next Wednesday, the 24th at 5:30. I've already with Mr. Guinan and been meeting with the senior advisors, Mr. Winkler and Ms. Federico, as well as Ms. Motto, our college and career counselor, to start having ideas for prom, baccalaureate, graduation, and those last day events that make senior year, senior year. And Ms. Stalata, we actually sent three different invites to families, one last week, another reminder today, and then one last week through Ms. Federico's update. The National Honor Society has already started its process. Ms. Stalato asked for the rank of the kids, so students should have been being invited. They're also doing a diaper drive right now. Our high school and middle school grade teams are still meeting because we're still focused on that social emotional health as much as yes, we have the kids hopefully back in school a lot. We still have 43% that are remote, so the synchronous learning is still going on. And it's hitting certain kids a lot harder than we thought. So we want to make sure that we're still focused on that and balancing the academics with the mental health of our students. Lunch, we have a rotating monitor for each lunch period, so kids can eat outside. Our kids need to be running around because standing behind a computer all day is a lot for them. And I think that's pretty much sums up the middle high school and what's been going on.
Thank you, Ms. Carrero. Item six, I'm sorry, is there any questions for Mr. Malone or Ms. Carrero from the board? All right, great. Seems like things are moving along. Maybe get back to normal one of these days. Item 6.2, the school business administrators report, Ms. Bishemi.
Yes, hello, everyone. I am going to start sharing my screen and bring up the PowerPoint presentation for tonight. On a second. So as of the last meeting, we did review all the parts of the budget and tonight we're going to go through some of the changes that we've made since then. Since we started the process. So let me just try and get this to work. Okay. So tonight, we're going to talk about our revenue projections again, which really haven't changed since the last meeting. And then we're going to do a full budget overview and talk about changes that have occurred since we started the process. So in the beginning of the process, we talked about back in January, we had a presentation on our fund balance. From there, we had a meeting on January 25th on salaries and benefits. And then we we had the various department budgets presented on February 8th and March 1st. So since January 25th, we have made some changes to the salaries and benefits budget, so we're going to go through that today. But our tax levy limit has not changed. It's still very low this year. It's 1.51%. Our budget to budget increase is also very low. We're trying to develop a budget with an increase of only 1.22%. We're trying to develop a budget with an increase of only 1.22%. So overall, our budget next year, we're projecting to be $44,871,539. And part of those salary changes that I'm going to discuss later include funding for a full-day pre-K program. So we'll talk about that in some of the later slides. But the proposed budget is under the tax cap for the 10th straight year, and I can't even believe that we've been actually, the tax cap law was instituted 10 years ago. And we're preserving all programs, extracurricular activities, and athletics. And as I said, it includes funding for a full-day pre-K program and the continued investment in instructional technology and equipment. So this is our tax cap, and this is what's been reported for the past 10 years. And you can see that a lot of these factors that are on the left hand of the slide, they pretty much stay the same each year. They don't change too much, but other factors such as the levy growth factor has changed significantly. We've had levy growth factors anywhere from 0.12% up to the 2% cap. So this year, the reason why our tax levy increase is so much lower than in previous years, as you could see on the bottom, is really because of our exclusion, and a lot of that is coming from where it says capital tax levy for the current year. You can see our capital tax levy for the current year is $1,690,674, which is a lot lower than our capital tax levy was for, and when I say current year, I'm sorry, our proposed capital tax levy for next year is lower than our current year capital tax levy, which is $1,971,966. So that's one of the reasons why our levy limit is so low, and another reason why the levy limit is so low this year is because of the growth factor. So the current year, the growth factor was 1.81%, and next year's growth factor is only 1.23%. So that is also driving that low increase. But as you can see, in other areas, our pilots receivable, it doesn't change too much. We receive the same basically every year. And other factors such as our TRS exclusion, our ERS exclusion, we've only been able to take that exclusion two times in the earlier years of the tax cap, and you can see on the bottom how our levy limit has changed over the years and that we've been under every year. So this year, we're proposing that our tax levy limit or our tax levy is going to be under our tax cap by $3,603. And that 1.5% tax levy increase for both town of Southampton and town of East Hampton, depending on your assessed value, and your assessed value not changing, is roughly a $50, $60 increase for the year and a monthly impact of just five, just under $5 in some cases, depending on your assessed value. So the projected revenues has not changed. We don't project anything to change on this slide until the legislative budget comes out, which is due anywhere around April 1st. So when that budget comes out, and we're hoping to get more state aid because of the stimulus bill that was just passed, and instead of replacing state aid that we're already receiving, we're hoping to get additional state aid. So at the April 12th meeting, we're hoping we'll have some good news and that the state aid numbers will be higher. Everything else on this slide, we don't anticipate changes being made from now till then. We did contact, I know that some of our non-resident tuition revenue, we have increased, and that was a fairly, it's a 21% increase from the current year. We do have an influx of students this year compared to last year, and we did contact some of those school districts that send their students here. So we have Wayne Scott students attending our schools, we have Sagaponics students attending our schools, and then we have Parentally Placed students attending. And that increase is really being driven by additional students we received from Wayne Scott. We did contact Wayne Scott to verify, to just find out if they had any news on any of the students, and whether or not they were students that just came out here for the city because of the pandemic and whether they'd be moving back, and they actually said they didn't, they don't have any information on that. They do anticipate all those students still coming to us next year, and there were maybe two students that might have been questionable, but they felt that we were going to be getting siblings of some other students. So we feel this $1 million number for non-resident tuition for next year is a really good number, and we don't anticipate that changing or decreasing. Our appropriated fund balance, right now, for the current school year, we appropriated $1,591,783, and we really feel that that would be unsustainable to go forward and appropriate that much fund balance to fund next year's budget. So one of the objectives in developing this year's budget was really to bring that number down, so we're hoping to only have to appropriate a million dollars to fund next year's budget. But depending on how state aid comes in, this, you know, some of these numbers will change, and we'll review those at the next meeting. So this is the final, this is the budget that we're proposing. These are the final numbers, and this is the budget by department and/or function, and each of these line items include salaries except the employee benefits line. And so it is hard to see where, why certain items are increasing more than others, but you can see that for debt service and to fund transfers, there is a big decline in there because we did pay off a lot of debt, and we also did not have to have a transfer to capital next year. So that was a decline of about $264,000. But on the next slide, it's a little bit easier to see what is actually increasing and decreasing. So this is the budget, the same budget. You can see the 1.22% increase, dollar change for year to year, and really, the increases are being driven by personal services, which is salaries and employee benefits. The salaries at the last, I believe it was a January 25th meeting was when the first time I presented salaries. We were actually hoping that they were going to remain flat at that point, but since that time, we saw that there was room for funding the full-day pre-K program within our salaries and within our final budget numbers, and there was also some other changes that had to be made for some salary adjustments that we became aware of after the fact. So the projected salaries, employee benefits for the next year's budget represent roughly 79% of the total budget. Based on the January 25th presentation, as I said, we thought that there would be like really an increase of $1,841 to salaries, which was less than 1%. Our employee benefits budget, we did explain what the increases were there, mostly driven by retirement increases and increases in compensated absences and other areas. And on January 25th, we felt the employees' benefits budget would increase by $413,202. So now, after receiving additional information on employee benefits and also reviewing salaries again, we increased the salary line by 300,000 or 1.25%, and employee benefits went up slightly also. So we had to add additional money in employee benefits on our dental line and on our Medicare reimbursement line to retirees. So the increase in salaries since the January 25th presentation, it's due to two pre-K teachers and TAs needed for a full-day program, reallocating salary costs for our summer school program that are currently being paid out of our special aid fund, and we also had to hire a new bus driver, and we had salary lane changes, and any additional contingency funds we also had to include in the budget for some other new hires. Employee benefits were increased because of, we received our actual dental rate increase for next year, and it was higher than we projected. So we originally thought rates would increase by 2.5%, and our rates right now are increasing at 5%, but we're still negotiating those rates, so we're hoping to bring that down. And that really is due to claims history and an increase in provider costs. And then Medicare reimbursements, we do have, we did have more retirees and spouses that we paid out for Medicare reimbursements this year. And you'll see on tonight's agenda, we are actually asking the board to approve a budget transfer of $45,000 into our Medicare reimbursement line. So once we've paid out our reimbursements this year, we knew that we needed to include more money in the budget next year to pay for those additional reimbursements to retirees and spouses. So that's really the explanation for the major changes since January 25th meeting on salaries and benefits. But everything still fits within that 1.22% budget-to-budget increase and overall increase in the budget of just over $500,000. And this is an explanation of the propositions that voters will see on the ballot. And on the proposition one is to approve the budget. Proposition two is the creation of a capital reserve fund. So our current capital reserve fund right now is at a choose-for-life, and we need to renew that in order to continue using those funds and in order to save money for the future in order to pay for any capital projects that we have planned. Also, we need to replace one of our buses, so we do have proposition three, which is the purchase of one new bus that would also come from our fleet capital reserve. So both of these items would have no impact on the tax levy at all. These are items that are either establishing a reserve fund or money's coming out of another reserve fund to pay for the bus. And then proposition four is what Mary just, Ms. Adamcheck, just explained about the voter registration changing. So I don't, next, the next presentation is April 12th, and I don't anticipate a lot of changes except for the revenue side. I do, I do think that the revenue projections will change based on the new state aid projections that we should receive sometime around April 1st. So now I'll go back to some of the other slides and answer any questions that anybody may have on some of the increases I just went over since the last meeting.
Any board questions for Ms. Bishemi?
I just want to say that it was a really, I mean, I've done a lot of budgets, and this one was really clean and precise, tight, and I just want to say, excellent job to Jennifer and to your staff because it really is a good budget.
Thank you, and the administrators worked really hard also to live within this budget-to-budget increase because it's such a small increase, but to be able to enhance the program with the full-day pre-K program is a really big step.
Huge. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a question. Regarding the school buses, I think I asked a question last year. You were not our business official that year, and if you don't have the answer to this, totally get back to us on a later date, but what is the reason why we keep purchasing buses and not leasing like so many other school districts?
Well, right now, we do have monies in our fleet capital reserve to just pay for our buses. I mean, anytime you enter into a lease, you are going to enter, you are going to be paying interest on those purchases. So for us to be able to pay for the bus upfront, it does reduce the cost instead of carrying it over a five-year term.
And we are, though, right now in a plan, though, where we are replacing, though, the buses every five years, though, right?
We are not replacing buses every five years. We actually have buses that are 12 years old right now in our lot that are still being driven, and the useful life of the buses are around 12 years old. So each year, I go to the transportation director, and I ask her specifically, do we need to purchase a bus? Why do we need to purchase a bus? Do we need to replace a bus? So this is actually replacing a bus. This is replacing a bus, too.
Yeah, I think, I guess what I'm, and I apologize, I'm not giving the full context for where my question's coming from, is we had the transportation analysis done like a few years ago where they recommended every year, we should get one year, one bus, the next year, two buses, the next year, one bus, the next year, two buses, so that we're constantly replacing buses. That was at least the recommendation, whether or not we're, it seems like we're not quite following that because it doesn't seem like we're getting two and then one.
Yeah, we do not need to replace all of our buses, so we're really replacing them as we need to replace them. If we, I mean, if there's no need to replace the bus because the bus is still working, then we're not going to buy a new bus. So I, and we also have a problem where we don't have a lot of parking in our bus lot. So as one bus gets removed, another bus gets replaced and parked right in that same spot. So it's not even as if we could have too many spare buses lying around because there's just nowhere to put them.
Okay, all sounds good. I just wanted to better understand exactly how we were going about it, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a quick question. First of all, I want to echo what Sandy said, that it's, you know, it's, you've made it very, you and your team and the administrators have made it very easy to follow and understand and follow the money and see what we're doing financially, what the plan is, and that gives us all a lot of confidence, and I want to thank all the hard work that went into that. At the last, I think it was the last board meeting, we teed up that the communications committee was going to request an additional staff member or individual to get on the payroll that was going to be some type of communication specialist, which we're going to talk about, I think, a little later on this evening. Does the current version of the budget incorporate that expense?
It actually does include money in a contingency line if we did move forward and whether we hired someone or whether we contracted out for the service. So it does include some funds in the contingency line. We have two contingency lines in the budget. One is for instructional staff and one is for non-instructional staff. So the instructional staff contingency line is actually much larger than it usually is because what happened was a lot of, some retirees who retired last year from the district were replaced with a lot of the one-year teachers that we have, so they were never fully replaced, so we had to include contingency money for them. And then we also know that some of these one-year replacements we may still need to keep depending on what happens in September, so we had to make sure we had money in the budget for that. Now, on the non-instructional side, it's the same thing. If we have to, if we have to hire any non-instructional staff, we have money set aside for, you know, probably at least two new hires if we had to, if we had to go ahead and do that. Because each budget line is really, just includes our current staff. There's no contingency really in any of our current salary lines.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. That was very clear.
You're welcome.
Any other board questions for Ms. Bishemi? If you could just go the calendar, Jennifer, before we move on. Thank you.
Yep, so the next meeting is the April 12th meeting, and as I said, we're going to, we'll do an overview again, and we can also accept questions from, you know, any of the community members. If you have any questions on any of the budget presentations that have, that have been presented so far, they're all on the website, and we're going to address any revenue projections that may change. April 20th is the adoption of the budget, so we'll do a short presentation that day also and go through the budget, the entire budget. May 10th is the budget hearing, so on May 10th, we'll also talk about what would happen if the budget failed. So if the budget fails, we would probably, we would have to make some cuts, and we'll go through what those cuts would look like if the budget did fail. And then, of course, we have the budget vote and election on May 18th.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions with respect to the calendar from the board for Ms. Bishemi? Okay, no questions. Thank you so much, Jennifer.
Hold on, I do have one question. You know, in a typical year, which we're all longing to back to, but in a typical year, the business official along with potentially an administrator might visit a couple of meetings of the different community organizations to do separate presentations like the New York Civic Council. Is the plan to potentially attend one of their remote meetings to do a presentation? Or, you know, are we extending ourselves out to those organizations to see if they want that level of communication from the district?
Oh, yes, I would definitely do that. So I would reach out to any community members or any community members who want to reach out to me, and if they would like me to join one of their remote meetings, I could give them the presentation because we normally do that every year.
Terrific, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, great. Brings us to our consent agenda. Is there a motion for consent agenda item 7.2 through 7.16?
So move second.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, Mary, it asks you to open up the voting, please.
That's unanimous.
Be great, thank you so much. No action items for tonight. Onto nine, our committee report, 9.1. Is there anyone from the audit committee or an audit committee update that we would like to share at this point? If not, it could always carry over like any other meeting.
It'll carry over. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer, appreciate it. Mary will carry that over to the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Item 9.2, the communications committee, is there anyone here or from? Is there anyone here or from the committee that wants to discuss a communications committee matter this evening?
So, yes.
I can't hear you, Sandy. Sandy, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Now I can hear you. Sorry, we couldn't hear anything you were saying.
Anyway, we had tried to empower and, and allow the members to basically run the committee as, you know, we co-chaired it. Unfortunately, tonight, due to COVID, due to field hockey games, they were not able to be here tonight. But we felt that it was important, both Chris and I and Scott, that we get on the table. I believe Scott sent this out to the Board of Education. We put it now online for people to see. We are requesting a communication specialist for the budget for next year. I think that there has been, and please Scott or Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, there's been a gap in Sag Harbor District between thinking that, you know, Scott Fisher, who is our total IT guy, who does all this stuff to then do our communications. And it's just, it's a lot of work and it takes a lot of time. And he is only one person and he has done an outstanding job. And we thank him and his team for these years. But we think it's time for us to really reach out and find someone else. We've also researched what Syntax does for the cost. And we, we feel that a communication specialist would be much more appropriate for Sag Harbor School Districts and having Syntax do our budget and newsletters. I don't have a price because the board has really not discussed this or, or like a fee. But I know that Jeff has reached out and we have contacted other schools to see what they do. And yeah, that's basically where we're at. So.
The recommendation Sandy would be for this individual to, aside from the additional things the committee has come up with, replace Syntax. That's, it wouldn't be like both.
Our recommendation is to use Syntax for your budget newsletter and for your, for your, the one-year letter that goes out to the people.
Well, and also press releases, correct?
Yeah. Well, no, I think the communication specialist in, in their job description, we have that as press release.
I, I know when this was originally developed, there are certain press releases that might go through Syntax versus this individual. For instance, there may be times where you're announcing, like we announced a new superintendent or other things like that, where you may use the PR firm.
We might, it might not. Yeah.
I might not. It just depends on the individual too, because a PR firm in terms of actual, you know, contacts with the press and doing all that. So, but it, you know, it depends on who we can hire. But just to, just to give some historical context, when the committee existed years ago and they did a survey to parents, students and staff, what they got back was, and we've still seen, you know, anecdotally this feedback, is that there are just certain areas of the communication where having somebody to specialize on it would probably be fortuitous in just being able to deliver more consistent communication. And over the past, I wouldn't want to say four years or so, the district has attempted to have stipends and for individuals in each building or have somebody else do it on staff. And I think it was all a really good effort and well-intentioned. But I think what we observed was that without having someone who is kind of dedicated to doing this and invested in doing it, you know, for a significant amount of their time, that we just weren't seeing the level of consistency. And that was the feeling of the committee, that we should kind of go back to this. Now, several current board members were on the board a couple of years ago when the previous superintendent had recommended this and this job description went in front of them then. And there was agreement that it made sense to move forward. And then due to a variety of circumstances, it hadn't gotten in that budget. So we're kind of coming back to the table saying, we feel like it's still needed.
Add anything, Scott? Maybe not.
No, Scott. Okay. Jeff, do you have a
Sorry about that. I had my mic muted. No, it's okay. I should have been unmuted. No, I just wanted to comment that of course I'm in favor of improving the communications to the community wherever possible. So whatever plan that is, you know, put into action by the district, I'm happy to support it and do whatever I can to, to make it, it better.
Brian, I, what you, you had asked something of me, Brian?
I, you know, if you had a recommendation or had an opportunity to review it, and if you hadn't, you could bring a recommendation to the board.
Yeah, I had, I thought the committee did some very good work in identifying some of the needs that need to be addressed. I would like the opportunity to come forward with a plan to the Board of Education for consideration because I have given a lot of thought to the different possibilities in addressing the need and have some very specific concerns about shortcomings with specific models. So I've already spoken to the building principals and, and we're prepared to present to the board probably at the next meeting with a recommendation for 2122.
And in that, Jeff, you'd let us know what other schools do, just as a comparison?
Yep.
And Brian, I just want to say that I wanted to thank Scott and Chris and the, and the committee because we met every single week since September to put this together. So this has been really well thought out, very diligent and very precise on what we felt the need was. And we're getting ready to present a survey to go out to the parents and students and, and community members who want to take the survey. That will also be going out, just to see if there's something that we missed. You know, I think we do a good job in communication on sports. Somebody might think we, we don't. So just to get, you know, different views from other people. So, but I just want to say thank you to the team because they really, I mean, literally every single Monday, we were literally on Zoom. So thank you to everybody.
No, it seems like a lot of work and the email updates. So we appreciate that. And then, and it's an important part because the, every year we talk about messaging and transparent, messaging the transparency and communicating to the public.
Right.
I think, you know, whatever we could do to better that, in my mind, is it would be a benefit to everybody.
Yep. Great. And I just want to say thank you to Scott for being my co-chair on this one.
Great. Okay, so we'll look for that presentation. We'll put that on Mr. Nichols for the next meeting.
Yes.
Great. Okay, item, and I'm sorry, any other board questions with respect to that?
I just have one procedural question, and this is for Jennifer. At what point would this potential expense or position need to be locked in to be in the budget in time before it goes out to everyone? Or can it, can it be kind of loosely defined to give us elasticity as we work through these, you know, the minutia on this?
Right now, I don't plan on removing that contingency. We built it in for anything that may come up during the year. So when the budget is adopted in April, then, you know, that line, that line will be changing.
Right.
So we're covered.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Any other board questions? Great. Item 10.1 for discussion. Budget vote and election absentee ballot applications, candidate nominating petitions, military votes and voter registration. Mr. Nichols?
This is actually Ms. Adomcheck again. So Mary, if you're ready to go, proceed.
I am. So this is about the budget vote and election day, which is Tuesday, May 18th, which would be held in Pearson's High School gym. The polls open at 7:00 AM and they close at 9:00 PM. There is two seats available. There's some important deadlines. First one is March 19th. That is petitions nominating candidates are available in my office or on the school's website. On April 19th, those petitions are due to me either by mail or hand-delivered 5:00 PM, again on April 19th. Which then brings April 20th, the absentee ballot applications become available for those people who are not able to come on May 18th. On April 22nd, there's a 5:00 PM deadline for military voters to register to vote and to fill out a registration application. And also to fill out an application for military ballot. That would be for an absentee ballot for a military person. Those are all on April 22nd. May 13th, which I spoke about, is voter registration day. On May 18th, ballots are due to me by, the absentee ballots are due to me by 5:00 PM. And all of this information is posted on the school's website and can be obtained from me through email. Any questions?
Any questions for Mary from the board?
Nope.
So basically to reiterate, they can email it, they can pick it up in person. There's many ways to get any of these forms from you or to you.
Right. Yes, that's correct.
Now, Mary? One quick question. In terms of the petitions themselves, can they be emailed? Or does it, do you need the original that has to be dropped off or sent through the mail?
I need the original, either hand-delivered or they could mail it.
Okay. I just want to be clear that people can't email that because then, you know, I, I would, I would not want to potentially carry it.
And I prefer no, excuse me, no faxes because sometimes a fax doesn't come through clearly.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah. And again, absentee ballot applications are for those who are not able to vote on May 18th. And those are obtainable in person, through the mail, email, or on the school's website. I made it a fillable form, which is very easy. And any questions, I can be called or emailed.
Any other board questions, comments? Okay, great. Nothing under section 11. We are on to public input number two. If there's anyone from the public that would like to, you'd have three minutes to address the board with any questions, comments or thoughts. Raise your hand or put your question into the chat box. Mr. Fisher?
I'm not seeing any hands or
Seeing no hands and I don't see any messages in the chat box. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Nope. Mary, please open up the voting.
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a nice night. Thanks, everybody.